I suggested turn down the old West Morgan school.
All right, thank you.
Bring that section U again, just bring it plain U.
We're gonna go ahead and start with our work session for October 8th, 2020. And first thing on our work session list here tonight is our first reading of our Title IX policy. Superintendent Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our reorganization that we had, Mr. Booth is now under the policy umbrella and he's going to present that.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you know, the board has approved a contract with the School Board Association to revise the entire policy manual. And that's, I'm not proud before it's already started. I've talked with both the school board attorney as well as the lead attorney for the project with the firm of Birmingham. And we were well underway with initiating that. We're hopeful it's been a short timeline to be able to have that project completed by March and presented for the first reading to you guys on April 1st at your board, at April board meeting. And then it made for consideration to adopt that policy manual. It's gonna be quite an undertaking, I'm excited about doing that. In the meantime, we've decided not to commence with trying to update policies along the way. We'll wait until we get that and find out if there's no sense, you know, doing the same thing twice. So we're going to avoid some of that. However, there is one policy that we feel wise to go ahead and initiate since it is permanent and we may need it tomorrow or hopefully we will never need it. But we could need it tomorrow and that is Title IX. And back in May, the US Department of Education changed the procedures along with the Office of Civil Rights on as far as sexual harassment and improper conduct regarding that in school systems. And as a result of that, basically what, you've got a copy of the policy in your handouts tonight. Basically what it does is restructure it and it tries to organize as far as reporting aspect of it, the investigative part of it, which is going to be a huge change for us in that there's a proper procedure for investigators, going to tax and phone and so forth with that. So if it's, if it's the pleasure of the board, we'd like to present this as the first reading for this and we'll add it to our policy manual. It's more than likely that this will be the same one that will come from the School Board Association. And I let you know that the School Board Association guidelines were used by our board attorneys to create this. And so if it's pleasing to you, we'd like to go ahead and let this be the first reading. And then our next board meeting, we'll add the new policy. Any questions remain about it, I've read through several times. If you've got any questions.
Looks good.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you. Bond refinance update. Who wants to give us that update?
Hi, Ken, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna introduce our underwriters, co-underwriters, Mr. Brad Green, Gordon, Raymond James, he's pretty important. And Mr. Johnny Deal, the president there. We went to market today. We got better than expected rates. So those rates came in, the refinance was a little over forty million dollars and they came in at a TIC interest cost of about 1.9%. So some of those, the highest coupon debt that we had was 5%. So we knocked that down to 1.9. I'll let Mr. Green give you an update. Just, he can go into a lot more detail than I will. I sent you a brief email. Grow savings was about 2.8 million, net savings about 2.4. And we're gonna take that savings over the course of the remainder of the life of the bond. So I sent you a schedule that showed what our best our reductions would be each year. Mr. Green, you done?
Well, he stole my thunder. I was gonna say, I was just pointing out that, you know, obviously interest rates are just extremely low right now. There's a huge rush throughout the entire country to try and do the same thing that you're doing right now. This might, this doesn't mean anything, but there was 10 to 15 billion of issuance in the municipal market this week. And last week it was 10 billion as well. And we're expecting the weeks leading up to the election to continue to put pressure on the market. And so I think our strategy was to try to get this in before the election, get it done quickly. Brian did an excellent job in helping us get that affirmation. The credit rating of the board is still very good. AA3 by Moody's, AA- by S and P. So that was affirmed by both rating agencies. And just, I think it's a great result. Two thousand, we refunded three issues, so these 2012, 2016, 2017. The 2012's had a 4% rate on the remaining portion of that debt. 2016 had 2.7%, 2017 had 2.8%. So all of those are now lower down to 1.91. Total savings were about 2.8, which is a pretty, a good bit higher than where we initially come to the board and presented to get authorization. So that's all from me. You got anything here?
Thank you very much, the board. And Brian positioning yourself, I think when you came six weeks ago, your funding savings were about 150, 155,000 a year. Now they're about 107,000 per year. And it's just great timing, very simply. But you took the action, you did yourselves a position and wisely lowered your interest rate significantly. I think if you treat your own money as board money like your own money, which I know you do, borrowing money at 1.9% is pretty strong.
You don't have a lot of school systems borrowing money at that rate?
Well, this was a 15-year maturity and that's overseeing a lot of systems borrow in the 20, 25, 30-year range.
Yeah.
And this is the lowest.
That's higher than 15.
For school system, I don't know about you.
Yes, fair enough.
It was, and we're gonna see the PSCA funds that are coming to the system. I'm not sure how much you're receiving, Brian, that there'll be a lot of issuance, probably matching that. But, and Brad said, we have a burden hand. I don't, that's gonna happen after the last COVID, COVID-19s. And you've handled yourself very well.
Depends on who wins.
Are you gonna stay even, are they gonna go up, are they gonna go to hell? That's my story, I think.
I bet you they go higher.
Yeah.
California girl gets her way.
Well, there's one thing for certain, that it has never gone much lower than it is right now. So I think generally there's only one way to go at this point.
Yes.
We hit lows in August and worry a little bit about that now, but all time.
Congratulations to you, you're a belle. Good start.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good finish.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bishop, for helping work through that with us.
My pleasure, Mr. Chair. We're a little off, I think there's an item on the agenda that they're gonna get down and once the board actually votes on that, and I believe that's our turn to come in. We're just in the work session right now. But once the vote actually occurs, then we have locked that rating at 1.9. So I guess it's a preliminary sale to the board, but so it locks that in. So we've got that together and then we'll have some more documents to sign in the next week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Any other questions? No other questions, I'm gonna move along to the selection of voting delegates for the 2020 AASB Delegate Assembly. So, I'm listening, Mr. Rhodes.
I would like to nominate the Honorable Paul Holmes.
Paul Holmes nominated.
He's an outstanding businessman. He's damn can.
I'm gonna have to decline your gracious offer, Mr. Rhodes, because I do not think I'm gonna be able to make that meeting.
You gotta pluck them chickens, I guess.
That's exactly right. I gotta keep your something.
That's money, ain't it?
Paul made a good one.
We know I always serve as the first person on the thing and so I'm glad to begin this year.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, Mr. Dobbs.
And we have to have a backup, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Irwin.
I'm proud of you, Jimmy.
Did you want to make that, that he's gonna change, are you gonna change that on that recommendation, sir, for the minute?
What? No, I'm not changing. Paul, Paul, he may not be that, but well, if he not be able to be there, he'd be a good representative.
According to my records right now, I have, Mr. Dobbs has accepted, he nominated himself and accepted it. So I think we're all pretty much agree on that.
We need it, we did officially.
Okay. Okay, Tom nominates Mr. Dobbs.
Jimmy thinks that's gonna get him down front again.
We just need, we just need a second delegate.
Oh, I thought you wanted a second on the board.
No. I don't, I don't even know that this is a voting, we just need to make a decision. Is it in the business meeting? Mike Tarpley.
He's always involved in those affairs, shivvies affairs down there.
So I have Mr. Dobbs and Mr. Tarpley. Is there any objections to any of those? I wanna thank the two of you for willing, being willing to do that. I really do appreciate that. Oh, an alternate. It's getting thin up here.
I'm in Mr. Holly.
I believe Mr. Adam Glenn would be a good alternate.
All right, I'll take Adam Glenn as an alternate. So we've got Mr. Dobbs, Mr. Tarpley, and Mr. Glenn. Any objections to any of those?
I'll be well aware of that.
You have that recorded, Mr. Good, for our business. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, we used a, we formed a principals committee in our principal searches for Brewer High School and Parkville Elementary School. We had an elementary committee that Dr. Humphries chaired and we had a secondary committee that Mr. Patterson chaired. And on the committees, we had a faculty member and a community stakeholder from, on each committee. And I just wanna thank Dr. Humphries and Mr. Patterson and those committee members for all their help with that selection process. We've also are updating the salary schedule into a more user-friendly version. I don't know if some of you have seen our salary schedule in the past, but it's several pages long. And there'll be no changes in pay to anybody on that salary schedule. It's just that we're making it a little more user-friendly and updating it. And I wanna thank Dr. Fowler and Mr. Woodard and Mr. Booth's help on and inputting to that. We're gonna present that to you at the November meeting. Mr. Booth, having now have the policies under his umbrella, has been in contact with AASB and is scheduling time to begin that process of reviewing our current policy manuals and updating that. And he's began work on that. Dr. Fowler is currently working on, with us to update our strategic plan. Normally we update these every five years and the last time we updated it was 2015. So it's time to update our strategic plan. And he's gonna be emailing the board members some information regarding that strategic plan. So you can be on the lookout for that. Just a reminder that the November board meeting will be Tuesday, November the 10th. It's not gonna be Thursday, it's Tuesday, November the 10th, with the work session at 5:30 and the board meeting at 6:00, as always, but it won't be Thursday. And the last thing I got is, I'd also like to thank the board for the wonderful gift of keeping Dr. Fowler on under contract because it's been extremely wonderful to have him next door to me to, when anything comes up, to bounce ideas off of. So thank y'all for that and thank you, Dr. Fowler. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Report, oh, let's see, announcement of agenda changes. Thank you, Mrs. Goode. Mr. Dobbs, will you provide us a report on the AASB District 8 Fall Meeting, September 15th, 2020, K-12 Cyber Security and also our Fall Conference, Academy Conference with Leadership for Community Engagement on October 4th to 5th?
The 15th meeting was a virtual meeting. It talked about cybersecurity. We understand what cybersecurity can do to our system. It can be a financial burden. And a person can put ransomware into our system and identity thefts of our teachers and every employee in the system could be infected. They could also go in there and corrupt data. So we just need to make sure as we've gone through this training and looked at it, we have a policy in place, a response plan to anything that goes up. Make sure we have secure backup and antivirus and employee training to make sure we're all up to date on the things surrounding cybersecurity. As we met at Montgomery, we got to hear a lot about some crickets. It was an outstanding talk from him about the small things he does with his system to recognize people, even the smallest things. And like, when they hire, when they hire a new person, they make sure the students get to be part of actually saying, "We're hiring you to be our teacher." Family members who may have had a big part in it or a former teacher who was, that this person looked up to. So finding the little things that we can do to make a change to a positive thing in everybody's life. One of the things we also talked about was culture, looking at the culture of each one of our communities, making sure we're individually handling the different cultural needs of each one of our, our communities and our schools because they're all different. We have different schools, campuses, and so each thing is a little bit different on each one. If you don't believe it, you just, you go to Dabo and try to tell them to go Indians and they'll tell you, "No, we're Hogs, we're not Indians." There is cultural differences. And one of the last things we talked about, what kind of moods are we in? And how do we handle different things? And we need to keep ourselves to the curious level and above. And as we look at things and not be in the bottom end of being stressed out, unengaged, difficult, cranky. We wanna be calm and happy and busy and creative and laughing and doing positive things. And one of the things a guy said, something, an exercise we ought to all go through for 21 days straight, write down three names you're grateful for. And it can't be the same for three names. So if that's an exercise, it would be beneficial to help us learn to be positive in our life. Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs. I need to add one thing before we get to board member comments. The last meeting, we announced that Dr. Dillard and Dr. Tanner had earned their doctorate's degree. Were entitled to be called doctor. And I know this board and I know everybody in this system appreciates all the work that went into that for them to earn that. I know there's a lot of self-sacrifice and sacrifice of time and family. And it's very impressive to me, especially when somebody can do it and work and juggle everything else in their lives. Something else that was really impressed to me is impressive to me, and it tells a lot about a person a lot of times, is when not only do they want the glory, but they wanna kinda share it or deflect it a little bit with their friends and their cohorts. And so after that meeting, Dr. Tanner came to me and said, "We earned that, but also we had two others that earned it with us."
Brian Johnson, boy.
And we, I apologized to them too, because we neglected to mention them at the meeting the other night. But she made sure we did, and to the point, she made sure she brought me a note tonight to remind me that we did it. So, Dr. Tanner, I appreciate that. But we wanna congratulate, and I know they're not here tonight, but we, as a board, I think, want to congratulate Dr. Mike Johnson, Assistant Principal at West Morgan High School and West Morgan Middle School, and Dr. Brian Ellis, the counselor out at Danville High School. So congratulations to them if they're watching and if you happen to see them, give them a pat on the back and tell them congratulations. I'm sure they've earned it. And Dr. Tanner, I think after that, I had a couple of other people. I think that whole cohort, you had a lot of good folks in there. Some other ones from other systems in there too, that we all know in there. So thank you for bringing that to my attention and congratulations to them. With that, Mr. Rhodes, do you have any board member comments?
Yeah, Ryan Johnson was a former student of mine. After that last paddling I gave him, he decided to become a doctor.
Mr. Dobbs, you got any comments?
On my opinion, one good thing about Montgomery, I'm gonna tell you a true story. 1937, Hank Williams and his band was coming home on Old 31. It was real foggy that night about 3:00 AM in the morning. He sat in the front seat, the passenger side, you know, he was a prolific songwriter. He got in close to Montgomery and down in Montgomery used to be a old hotel called the Jeff Davis. On top is a tall hotel, on top it was a light. And when he got close enough in the fog, he could see that light flashing. That's where he wrote the song, "I Saw the Light." He died at 29. Somebody was 10 minutes late a while ago, they getting attention. They getting attention after the meeting today. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
We appreciate everybody being here, appreciate the success that our employees are earning with their doctorates. Even Brad Slaper was one of them that I saw where he had just received his degree. So, you know, there's a lot going on in our community and sometimes we don't know these things are going on. But when teachers go and our staff members go and get these degrees, it's wonderful. They have to sacrifice family life a lot of times temporarily. But I still say they think their families are very important. But as we have these teachers going on and gaining other degrees and like National Teachers of Year and so forth, we have a lot to be proud of with our teachers. We're under a lot of stress right now with things that's going on with COVID. And we're still struggling to get through it and we will work through it. I know a lot of our teachers are under a lot of stress, but we still need to, as our talks that we went through this weekend, we need to be patient. And the irony of that last meeting, we talked about being patient and being positive and being joyous and trying to stay on the positive side and not let road rage and all this get to you. As I'm leaving the hotel, go down to, leave the parking deck, the gates are not working right and they put a guy down there who had never worked the gates before to help. He was a janitor. And they stuck him down there and he's, even his master badge thing would not work and make it go up. And people are tooting and people are screaming, people are hollering at him and he's getting all nervous and everything. And I got up there, he's like, "I, I just can't make it work and nobody at the desk, I'm pushing the button, nobody will answer to come give me help." And I said, "Don't worry about it, they'll get over it as soon as they get out here and get on their way, they'll be just fine. But you just take your time and get it done, don't get under pressure, you're doing a wonderful job." Do we oftentimes take time to fight someone who's trying to help us even though they may not know how? It's not, it wasn't his fault that it wasn't working right. It's just, I just thought of the irony of, we just went through that tragedy and people were sitting on the horn and screaming at him to get those gates open so we can get on the road. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs.
Did you get a raise with the doctor's degree?
Ms. Tanner?
Yes, sir.
Good.
That's what you need, that's what you need, girl. You thinking about getting yours?
Not a doctor's degree.
Mr. Holmes, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
The gentleman that Mr. Dobbs was referring to was, his name was Ming. And he, he really didn't have a lot of knowledge about how to get the gate open. I wasn't blowing my horn, I wasn't hollering, but I was wanting to go out there and just pull the gate open. But we did get out and he didn't know how he done it, but we did get out. So, but last meeting, I did fail to congratulate Ms. Tanner and Ms. Dillard and didn't realize that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Stapler.
Mr. Ellis.
And Mr. Ellis, they all got theirs. So congratulations to each one of y'all, I know that's a big accomplishment. You think back when we were in school, a long time ago, you didn't hear of any doctors. They just wouldn't, the only doctors you ever heard of was professors in college when you got there. And so congratulations, we have several of them in our system. I think that makes our system a lot stronger. So I appreciate the sacrifice y'all went through to get that. Is now the time to congratulate Tom. This is Tom's last meeting with us. There's, there's one, one constant and that's change. And Tom's been here 24 years, I believe. And at some point, every one of our seats will be vacated and somebody new will be sitting in. And I just wanna tell Tom, I appreciate the job you've done. You've served your community and your county well. You've been a wealth of knowledge for me since I've been on the board and I appreciate everything that you've done. So don't look at it as a defeat, but look at it as a great accomplishment. So one of these days, we'll all be, we'll all be sitting out there looking in. And that's not a bad place to be.
One of these days we'll meet our maker too.
That's exactly right. So congratulations, hope it all goes well for you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize Mr. Elliott, is this is his first meeting as superintendent. Congratulations on that. We've had a lot of correspondence between your hiring and now and I think you're doing an excellent job. Dr. Fowler, I know is, he's keeping you in line, so if that's what it takes, we'll keep you here. Dr. Fowler just stands, just stands by.
I need reinforced.
If you think you're off the hook when you're gone. But we do appreciate what you've done, we appreciate what you're doing and look forward to really good from here forward.
Y'all might announce some new jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Glenn?
I do again want to congratulate you, Kelly, Dr. Tanner, and the others who accomplished such a significant accomplishment. Especially, you know, they always say going back to school after you've grown is even harder. And I can't imagine going back to school right now. So that's a huge accomplishment. But congratulations. And Brian, again, thank y'all for the work there with the bond issue. I just, I continue to be pleased with the way we're able to save money and save the taxpayers money. And it just opens up so many other things for us. So appreciate your work there and your team. And Tom, you know, it's hard to follow what Paul said. He said a lot of things that I agree with, but I will say to you personally, thank you for your support and helping me and your encouragement to me just as a person coming on the board and finding my way around my first term. You'll truly be missed, but again, thank you for all that you've done and your support there. Wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn, Mr. Tarpley.
To, I wanna say congratulations, Dr. Kelly Tanner. Known you a long time. Congratulations, we're proud of you. And for all those that obtained their doctorates, we congratulate them. And Mr. Elliott, thank you for hitting the ground running and we appreciate what you're doing, all the hard work. Mr. Bishop, thank you for a good job, appreciate what you're doing. And Tom, we've served many years together and it's been an honor to serve with you. serve with you. You're a good man. And you've, you've served for many years and it's touched, you know, it's a lot of children's lives. And we appreciate your service. Appreciate your friendship.
Tom is a fine Christian man.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpley. Mr. Earwood, do you want to say anything?
I want to say ditto's except to me. I want to say ditto's to Mr. Tanner and Mr. Holly Elliott. Thank you. Appreciate you being around, Dr. Fowler. You've been a great foundation for all of us. And I'll say a few more words later.
Thank you, Mr. Earwood. Now second, or third, fourth, or fifth, or whatever it is, Mr. Earwood, you will be missed on this, on this board. And we appreciate the service that you put in. You're, you are a good man. With that, we are going to adjourn our work session. And if it pleases the board, could we move right on into our business meeting? Or do we need a break?
Pleases me to move on.
Pleases me, move on.
Okay. Just tell me when you're ready.